Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christina Torres. I am counsel for Hardy Investment Associates. My address is in care of 84 Lumber Company, 1019 Route 519. That's in 84, spelled out in letters, Pennsylvania, 15330. And I think Mr. Murray has done a thorough job of presenting our case, but I just wanted to impress upon you that we have tried to exhaust other possibilities before filing the petition for annexation. In particular, I worked extensively with Chuck Allen at the Ohio EPA, which resulted in him actually visiting our site in August, August 23rd of 2001, to determine if we could put in a septic system at the site. And his conclusion was that we could not. Apparently, you know, most of the site is asphalted and the soils are not proper for an installation of a septic system. So when we got a denial from Mr. Allen, I then contacted City Law Director Pete Schilling and tried to determine from him whether or not the city would be willing to provide sanitary sewer service to our site. And as Mr. Murray indicated earlier, that request was unanimously denied by the Utilities Committee. So we really had no choice but to file for the annexation. Also want to make you aware that 84 Lumber Company ceased operations at the site in July of 2000. Property's been listed for sale since that time. We believe the fair market value of the property is roughly $825,000, and we've had it under agreement twice since July of 2000. The first agreement was an automotive sales user, and that buyer's due diligence, that fell through due to the sanitary sewer problem. And the second buyer was a company that was going to develop a bus hub for Lorain County Transit Authority. Now, that particular buyer had some financing issues, which was one reason this did not go through, but the secondary reason was the sanitary sewer system, because there was just no resolution to the problem. So I guess I'd like to say that, you know, my client does have a valuable asset in the Alaria Township that really has been rendered invaluable because of this problem. So when you're considering our petition, I'd like you to bear this in mind and also bear in mind that, under the laws of Ohio, it is the owner's choice to be annexed into the city of Alaria, and also, I believe, it is in the best interest of the property. So thank you for your time this morning.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to make a statement in opposition or in favor of this annexation? Sheriff Stemedy?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask you if, what you thought about this.
Yeah, I'm in favor of progress, and everybody knows I'm the county sheriff, and I protect the citizens and the townships. And I think we have enough adequate force to do that. And Alaria Police Department has an excellent department, but so does Lorain County Sheriff's Office. I guess my opinion of this thing is, it's this amount of property today, and we know Alaria has things on the board right now, issues that's 30 acres tomorrow and 60 the next day. Where is this going to end? And I think one of the problems that I see is Alaria can bend a little bit too, because they could say, "We're going to approve this to tap into the sanitary sewer system and charge a fee for it." But I understand they want to get tax base and things of that order too. But I think people move out of cities into townships because that's what they want to do. And I think the services at the townships and the county provider are adequate also. That was just my comment.
My concern, Sheriff, is, you know, we're supposed to look at this at the best interest of the property to be annexed. In your opinion, is it going to be to the interest of that property for their safety to have the city on almost both sides? And the service from the city police department, is it going to be confusing? Who do we call? The sheriff or the city police? I mean, this seems like to me it would confuse the owners or future owners of that property, and it might create a safety issue. And again, being the fire department is so close to that property, they're going to call the city's fire department, which is on the other side of 57. Will these people know who to call? Do they call the city or do they call the one next door?
I think if they are annexed, then they know who to call if an emergency would come up, because there is, you know, there's entities over there now where there's city and, like, we have panties, we had 84 Lumber. And like I say, I'm out here, Alaria Police Department's the next department, but so is ours. I guess my issue is that, is this ever going to stop? And I understand Alaria's looking at their own tax base and their own interests. And I guess I'm looking out for the county and the township's interest.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anyone else who wants to make a comment, either for or against this particular issue? Commissioners, you have questions or comments? Mr. Murray?
The fact that the Fire Department for Alaria Township adjoins this property and probably could get there quicker, that does not, is not enough in and of itself to defeat annexation. There's a recent case that just came out about two weeks ago. It's the Brom versus Board of Trustees. And in that particular case, the evidence showed that the township, in that case, had superior snow removal service. And the court held that that lone factor did not outweigh the issue of the majority of the residents that wanted the city to annex the territory. And as long as the area to be annexed was not going to lose services, the fact that they had better snow removal services would not defeat the annexation.
And that was a court case?
Yes, it's in the, it's on your sheet there that I left with you. It's Brom versus Board of Trustees. It's on page six. It's the last one, because it's a recent decision. Mr. Ennis can tell you more about it.
And what court is that, Garrett?
Court of Appeals, 143 Ohio Appeals.
Which district, though? Court of Appeals, is that for the state or like the Ninth District Court of Appeals?
I don't have...
I was just wondering, was applicability to this Board of Commissioners, that was all.
The applicability of it?
Yes.
Well, because there was a question of, that Commissioner had, Basie had, about fire station being right next door, would they be able to know where to call or... If you take a look at your 2001 map that the county gives, the first one that I gave you, if you look up to the north, the Shadden Road area, I noticed when I was doing this, that Shadden Road area is completely surrounded by the city of Alaria. So I really don't think that the people have a problem. They'll know that if they have a fire, they call Alaria, because they know they're in the city of Alaria. The same for the police protection.
Thank you. I believe there's a bigger issue, though, and I think that Trustee Hutman spoke to that issue today, and I liked what I heard. I will, the proof is in the pudding. I'll be happy when I see something that comes forward.
Exactly.
Because this is an ongoing issue for your township, for the city of Alaria, for this Board of Commissioners. And I would like to see some sort of an agreement so that we can quit coming forward with these and the issue can be addressed, so that we can move on to bigger and better things. And I appreciate what Mr. Murray had to say about the company that Ms. Torres represents, and they're willing to give some compensation to the township for their loss of property. I think that that's admirable as well. A bigger concern to me is the ongoing maintenance of Griswold Road. This is an issue for today, but the maintenance of this road is an issue for the future. And since it's close to properties that we all like to visit on occasion, I want to see that it's maintained properly by whoever's going to do that. So what's the pleasure of the Board?
Well, I think the city of Alaria's got quite a few more annexations coming up. So as long as the trustees are happy that we don't need an agreement today, and they're comfortable with that, and the city of Alaria knows that they're going to have to negotiate, correct? And I don't have a problem, as long as the township trustees don't have a problem with this annexation. So if I need to make that in a motion to support the annexation, then that's what I'm doing right now.
Did you want to find, make a finding?
Or do we have to wait for one more? I thought you were already done, I was asking.
No, I was. I'm looking at Mr. Ennis, because it's appropriate for us to make a finding for the general good.
As part of the motion, we have to make a finding that the specific requirements of the revised code are met, and in particular, that we find this to be in the best interest of the property to be annexed.
Correct.
So we all include that as part of the motion.
I'd appreciate it.
Is there a second to that motion?
What concerns me is that the referendum that was out there in regards to the new annexation laws was defeated, and there's like five different ways now for annexations if they don't get their additional votes, which doesn't seem likely that they will. But what's going to happen in the future? I mean, the city of Alaria is like holding people hostage over sewers and taking our township property, and an ordinance can be changed, and I really would think that the city of Alaria would consider changing their ordinance instead of coming in here and eating up all our township land. It just doesn't seem reasonable, and especially where it's highly commercial. They seem to really enjoy and take a pleasure in taking, taking the land that's commercial. And I know it's all a tax base, and that's their first priority, is to do what's best for their city. But they still should consider being a good neighbor.
I think they are, and I think we've had two good neighbors in here saying it's okay.
I'm hoping.
If that was not the case, I'm sure we'd be talking more. So I think you have two good neighbors. They're talking, and as long as they're happy that they don't have an agreement, and I know there's more issues between the two, I'm sure they're going to work something out, and we won't have to be here doing this, so.
If I might, Commissioners, I've been a part of those negotiations, and I would say that the city of Alaria has taken a very bold and dramatic step towards working toward, working with the townships. And I think what we're seeing here today from Alaria Township is they never want to be outdone by the city, so if the city's going to be a good guy, the township wants to be a good guy better, so. There are some unresolved issues, but I think, as the sheriff said, everybody's looking here to make some progress. And I know this Board is as advocate, as I am, of governments working together. And there's being some trust extended to each government, but a lot of our discussions have been that we've got to start trusting one another. And I think you're right, Commissioner, that, but I want to make sure everybody knows the city of Alaria has been extremely cooperative and have taken some dramatic steps to try and work with the township on this issue.
That's good. That's good to hear.
I guess we're waiting for a second.
Yeah, because I think once the new laws come into effect, it's going to make it harder for people to even annex, and that's going to create even more of a problem with, for the property owners. I mean, you're going to see property like this that's stifled now, but with the new laws, they won't be able to come in here, or possibly not be able to come in here and annex as easy as they are now. So I'm glad to hear that the city of Alaria is cooperating. It's good to know.
Did you want to second that motion or not?
I don't really want to, but, well, let me rephrase my question.
Since you don't, I will. I'll second. You just want to. Thank you, Commissioner Basie. Are there any further comments? Madam Clerk, you call the roll, please. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And I look forward to the next annexation from the Alaria Township, wherein the terms of this agreement will be ironed out, and we'll all be happy to hear it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That concludes this public hearing. I believe the Commissioners were in executive session, and we still have some unresolved issues, so I move that we return to executive session. Did you want to do a public comment? No.
Okay.
If that's...
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye, aye, aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
No, I think I...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moore?
Ms. Basie?
Okay, all right.
There, thanks, Jim, for smiling. I was like, hopefully didn't wake you up.
That's right, they were agreeing. Yeah, but I didn't see them in there before, so I signed that.
There were some messes, and some you did sign.
All right.
Listen, you have to...
I have one.
Thank you. Okay, we have reconvened. The first issue is, as Teresa noted, that there were some advances, specifically four, I believe.
I believe that was the number.
I signed off four, yeah. I think we all signed four.
Okay, so I move that the advances be approved as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the other two outstanding items was the personnel summary sheet. I'll move for approval.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
It's Mr. Moore, right?
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Aye.
And then the other question was on the requisitions, and Commissioner Basie had asked about two specific items, and I believe that Mr. Cordez is going to address those issues. And then if we have further questions, we will hear further comment.
Well, the issues center around the purchase of equipment needed to bring the email in-house. And I think that issue is dominoed off of the issue we discussed last week concerning first communications near the shores, and who's going to be hosting our internet for the county, and thus what our requirements for in-house email are. I have, you know, a couple conflicting points of view on that issue, and I'm not the technician, so we can defer to Mr. Smith to give us his point of view, recognizing that I also received some information from Ms. Plaidman when she, earlier supported her position with the Board when we first were looking at the first communication issue. Ernie, you want to take it from there?
And while Ernie's getting up, I just want to ask from my own point of view, the software and the server for the email program, irrespective of who our provider is, needs to be purchased, is that correct?
Not, not in accordance with the memo I received today from Ms. Plaidman, who said that it wouldn't be. Now, once again, I am not the technician here.
Neither am I. That's why I asked. I thought it was a simple yes or no.
Well, Mr. Smith may be able to respond to it. I can't, because I said I have conflicting information, and I'm sure that Ernie will be able to enlighten you more than I can.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Ernie.
Good morning. The issue with the, have you had a chance to review the point paper that I put together? Are we talking about that specific?
I don't even think I've seen it.
Did you give a copy to the Commissioners, or were you counting on me giving them a copy?
Yes. Yes, I would. Give it to Sandy for review.
We haven't seen it. I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Why don't you start the discussion, and Sandy will bring us some copies. I didn't know I was going to give it to the Commissioner in the public.
Okay. Pull that copy up, pull up. There is an issue currently with software that we have in licensing that needs to be brought up to date, or there's money that needs to be spent regardless to bring us into compliance with the email system. And that number gets real close to $30,000, depending exactly on how many people are planning on coming on board. The numbers I have from assistance managers reference 520 people that they expect to need licensing for the email service.
That need or that don't have right now, or that need?
The current licenses need to be upgraded, and additional licenses need to be made, need to be purchased.
How many licenses we got now?
100.
How many, how many people are you allowing a license?
One.
How many people are using them now? Are you saying 525 people are using them now?
At its peak, according to assistance managers, in two different meetings, we came up with a number of 520 users that would require this licensing. Some would be brought on as the system was developed, some are currently using it.
But who's that? Is that like all the departments, like the prosecutor, the auditor, and everybody?
Yes.
So, but it has, what, we have to pay for that, or can we get that from all the other departments too, or that's probably not a question for you.
It's my understanding that the email system would be looked at as like the building, a service provided to everyone working in the building by the Commissioners.
That's just under the Commissioners.
Excuse me? That would be global, Commissioner, all departments accessing...
Are you talking about licensing, or are you talking about the server? Which one?
Well, we're talking about the licensing and the amount of license that we would need. You would be providing this on a global basis for the county as a whole.
Yes.
We'll be doing what?
All county employees. We're responsible for paying for the licenses.
For licenses?
For all county employees, yes, yes, Commissioner.
Well, how are they operating now if they don't have a license?
I'm not sure we really want to go too far there.
I would just like to know, who do we get the license from? Who is the licensing agent?
We would purchase the licenses ultimately from Microsoft.
We're not in strict compliance with the guidelines used to determine these issues.
And we need money to make sure that we are in...
Compliance.
That's a good way to say it.
But who establishes that we need to have these licenses? The state of Ohio tells me I have to have driver's license.
The people who own the material.
Okay, thank you.
So who owns this material?
Not us. And we haven't paid for it.
I'm talking about other departments that are in here. Is it just the responsibility of the three Commissioners?
Well, normally, we would handle licenses of this nature on a global basis for all departments, because they're not individually budgeted to purchase this type of...
Well, I know they're not budgeted, but don't they have other, don't they use other revenue streams to purchase things too, or?
They probably could. Some of them could be encouraged.
So the general fund?
They may, remembering that a lot of these revenue streams are specifically detailed to what they can be used for.
I'm just asking.
I'm just, I'm just responding.
But is this license needed for email, or what?
Ernie, want to go further with that?
Every, every user that wants to use the email system would require two separate licenses, one for the email service and one to access the server with Windows software. And that would be to each one of the 520 users.
So we need 1,040?
No, we need 520 email licenses and 520 client access licenses for the Windows software.
But I mean, total, we'll need over 1,000?
1,040 licenses, yes.
Okay, now, what was that? Where was that on there? Was that number...
In the paragraph there where I stated that the money needed to be spent regardless is part of the $50,000 if we were to bring an email server in-house.
Look on your requisitions, that was the second item, number...
2447 is CPU training and monitors for micro advantage.
So this has to be 244301, and is that the 38,000?
Software for server and email.
So that's for the 1040 license, oh, the 1,040 licenses, at 38,118?
Yes.
It is.
So that gets us in compliance.
Yes.
Which we have to do no matter what, because...
Well, the 38,000 would be the total software and licensing required to bring an email service in-house, and then some reference material to work with it.
And future growth, because you're requesting additional...
We position for future growth at that point also, which, if we grew beyond the 520, then we would again have to buy more licenses.
But then we'd be buying them one at a time, right? So if we have, we hire 10 people and 5 of them need computers, we're going to have to buy five more licenses.
Yes.
Okay. And we can do that as we go on. Okay. That's that one.
So it's 30,000 just for the licenses. Correct?
The approximate $30,000 is a, is a number that needs to be spent immediately, whether we go forward with bringing an email in-house or not.
I like that. I like this word.
And what's the other 8,000 for?
There's also a requisition for an email server for, I think it was $8,200.
That's inside the 38,000?
No, 38,000 plus 8,000, it's 46,000.
The 8,000, excuse me, the 8,000 that was for an exchange server that was on last week?
Yes.
Isn't that the one that we had the resolution on? Is that the...
Yes. That's the one that, well, actually, it's a router that you questioned whether we would need depending on the service provider.
Well, don't confuse a router with the exchange server, it's two different items. Okay, sorry.
Okay, this exchange server for $8,000 is different than this.
To bring the email service in-house, we need to buy $38,000 worth of licensing and software. An $8,200 server is my recommendation to go with. That puts us at approximately $46,000. I mean, there's also a small buffer in there if we were to require any consulting services and...
Ernie, was that, that was the piece of equipment that Commissioner Basie, our terminology's incorrect, but the piece of equipment was the same piece of equipment we were talking about last week?
The router got confused with the exchange server somewhere along the line.
Okay.
The router would be required if we were going to change the Internet service provider. We would have to purchase a router, which I identified on my paper there.
Where is that at? I'm reading it.
Underneath first communication points, the fourth line.
Fourth line? Am I looking at the right one?
Approximately 2,300 required for a new router.
Oh, the fourth paragraph, absolutely, okay. Oh, off the top. Okay, I'm looking at the paragraph, sorry. Okay. Oh, okay, that's what you did. Okay. To your country. Okay, I see. Okay. And on this one here that I'm looking at, you got 487, and you got soft, oh, that's another provider.
Those are three quotes.
Oh, okay.
This is the one they're recommending, and the purchasing hand or Ernie got two other quotes, and one quote was for 48,000 for the same service, and the other was 54,000. So this is, the 38,000 is the best of the three quotes.
Which is going through ASAP, so, okay, I see, I understand. Where'd I get this from?
Come on, find me one more time, Ernie. What is the 38,000 going to buy? 30,000 is going to be licenses, and the 8,000 is for...
38,000 is the total package of software, licensing, and reference materials required to bring the email service in-house.
Licensing and referencing, software licensing and referencing equipment.
Yes.
What's referencing equipment?
Books, reference material, because it would be a new software package and reference material to help administer it.
Okay, since we're spending the money for the whole county to do this, are they, let me see how you do this, I mean, is there like a help desk or anything where people, because if you're going to buy all these manuals, I don't want them spread out all over the county in different departments. How are we going to control that we don't have to buy any more of these things, because...
Again, the idea of the Commissioners buying it would be so the Commissioners could control it.
Okay, so you would have, that department, IT department, would have...
I would manage the licenses and...
For the whole county?
Administering it, ensure that it was administered.
Okay.
Now, we're buying these for only 500 people, that's not the entire county.
No, we're talking about this administration building?
The number 520 is a number that came up with meetings with assistance managers.
The, I want to interject from, that would, non-general fund folks like levy activities, so they would be responsible for their own, so...
Jobs and family and all that would be...
Right. And if, if Ernie does provide them a license, we can cost back to them and capture some funding for that, if there's some additional...
Can we work on that anyway, just to see if we can do that?
Sure.
Because if they do have any funds available, maybe we can offset it, so...
Because the general fund really should not pay for a levy activity.
Exactly.
And there's some levy activities, or some things we can't supplement, like the dog and kennel were prevented by law from supplementing their funds, so they would have to use their funds, or we'd have to recapture on the cost back.
How much is each license, and does it have to be renewed each year?
The license is good for two years, and... The license is good for two years, and the cost, I don't have on the top of my top of my...
Five hundred and twenty divided by, or a thousand, it should be 300 bucks a piece, roughly, right?
If you have the quote there, it's there.
It is?
With ASAP software.
And is it a two-year license, so in the end of two years, we have to renew this?
Yes.
It's a renewable expense after two years?
Yes.
Okay. It, it varies on the type of, okay. So it varies depending on what type. So there's five twenty, forty-two bucks, okay.
So every two years, it's going to cost us another thirty-eight thousand dollars?
It's probably going to cost us a lot more if it ever gets out there, we're operating illegally. I don't think, I don't want Microsoft coming in here.
You say illegally, we said we weren't in compliance.
Oh, sorry. Tape that back.
I remember Karen doing something with these licenses, Ernie. I remember Karen doing something with these licenses.
Yes.
Didn't we buy some before?
Yes, we did. Those need to be upgraded.
But Karen hasn't been here two years yet, I don't think. Has it been two years since we purchased those?
Uh, the time that it's been since we purchased them, I don't know, but there was a problem with that purchase.
How many licenses is there so that there could be a problem with them?
I guess they said they only have 100 licenses, and we have a lot more users, so it's time to get us in compliance.
There was 100 licenses purchased, so that, that was okay, it's just that we have more users than those licenses permit, right?
Right, and then when we buy the software, we're going to, we will be buying the current version, which will require those licenses to be upgraded.
Oh, so what's the, what's the software now that we're buying with this thing?
The exchange server software to...
Don't we have an exchange server down there?
There is a server running, exchange server on it now, yes. But in my opinion, it's not adequate.
Right, it's just for the Commissioner's department now, so if you're putting 520 people on our server, then it's not going to be adequate, but I, it's my understanding that the auditor has their own server.
There are several departments that all have their own servers.
Right.
There's several departments doing their own thing with email.
So you're putting them all on ours?
I'm offering, I'm recommending that the county provide email service to the county employees, so we can begin to emulate...
But they do have email service now, because we have their servers down there in the lower level, in, in the computer room.
You're, you're recommending centralization of the email?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, and then...
Okay, so you're trying to bring everybody in, right?
To get, to get folks off of Hotmail accounts and AOL dot com, to provide everybody the same L-O-R-C-N-T-Y dot com email address, to standardize it.
And then what do we do with all the old equipment? Just pitch it?
No, there'd be several web initiatives in the near future where we'd be able to use those for web hosting, testing, and getting ready for those type projects.
This is going to be quite a big switch. Is our other departments ready to do this? I mean, I don't, I don't want to hear from...
Systems managers are onboard, that's how we came up with the...
Yeah, but I don't want to hear from the elected officials. The systems managers are fine, they can all agree, but it's their bosses who are the elected officials, and that's the ones I want to hear from. Are they in agreement with coming aboard with us on this?
I think it sounds like they are.
I don't know.
Well, I think that the systems managers work for each one of those elected officials, and I'm sure that there's some, there ought to be some communication between them and their elected official. You've got buy-in, you feel you have buy-in for this project from the systems managers?
Yes, well, this is not a new thing. The exchange server actually went before the data board in April, and was passed at that time to do it. I'm just following through with the project that was somewhat started early in the year and just never got there for whatever reason.
Okay. So that's good news. Compliance. Compliance, that's the word, right?
The licenses would not have to be bought all at one whack upfront, I mean, they could possibly be a few dollars higher if we just only go with 150 or 200, but the, my understanding was twice we came up with this number for two separate pieces of software, because we also had to go through with the antivirus software earlier.
Do we have minutes of the meeting or anything that shows or even indicates that the data board approved this purchase?
Yes.
Are, you have them?
I think you're supposed to say, "May I approach the bench?" I think that's what Garrett, that's what Garrett says all the time.
We're still on TV, I wouldn't make fun of him, he'll worry about it.
He's not making fun of him, he's just giving Ernie some tips.
Oh, I see.
What are we looking for?
To approve the purchase of this server.
Are we doing the dog warden sites too, or, I thought we couldn't do that?
Well, it's, it's, we can do the sites, it's how we recapture the funds that we have to be careful about.
Oh, okay.
The code's quite explicit in these areas.
Okay.
It talks about the server, so of course, along with the server, I'm talking to myself, comes the license.
You gotta do, I think we gotta do it. That's the way to get it under our control.
Okay, who was at the data board meeting that's approving this? We didn't have all the elected officials, did we?
I would say most of them are there.
Tell Eric Stewart-Jamison.
Kendricks is the commissioner, but he doesn't, uh...
Nabokowski. Board of Elections, the Mr. Bureau.
Okay, so how many issues do we have to decide on now? I know we're on requisitions, but I know it ties into...
Well, I, I think Ernie has pointed out that this issue has to be decided regardless of the outcome of the first communication, your issuers issue, to bring us into compliance with current standards.
What happens after this? I mean, what else do we need to be in compliance? I mean, is this the beginning of thirty-eight thousand, and then some more is coming after that? Is there another 50,000 behind this?
That was a point I tried to make last week. There are issues that have compounded themselves, the more that I look into them. I've found a lot of things that I'm not settled with in my mind to proceed with, and I haven't had the time to fully investigate all of them, but there are more than one...
So you're saying there's possibility that more is going to come after this?
It's possible.
Can we wait until it all comes together? Is there some kind of plan, strategic plan for the, for these computers, or are we just buying as we go along here?
Again, I'm following through with something that started earlier in the year with the exchange server, is my understanding, while based on the data board minutes there and the letter that's submitted to ask for that requisition, that it was an ongoing project.
But do we have to continue on with it until, I mean, can we wait until you look at the whole, the whole picture and...
The exchange server and bringing email in-house as a project in its own, I'm comfortable with that. I'm talking about other things to do with other...
Like what?
Software servers.
You're talking about other web pages for maybe the community development department, stuff like that, correct?
Just getting more familiar with all the servers that I'm responsible for, all the software, all the things that are, the different departments are doing, waiting for inventories to verify ownership of hardware and software. It's an ongoing continual thing.
Okay, so by the way, we're at a couple of crossroads here. Whether or not we need this, we're going to vote on that. Then we have to decide on Erie Shores and First Communications, and then I think the next thing is you need some, probably, I don't know, marching order or something to at least say, "Hey, we'd like to see a strategic plan on where we're going to be heading in the next 12 months." I mean, and I don't know how long that's going to take, but you think that's...
Making the decision on whether the commissioners want to bring the email server, email service in-house is a decision that needs to be made.
That's one. And by voting on the requisition, that's what we're doing?
For the, for the thirty-eight thousand...
Thirty-eight thousand? That's a decision that says whether or not the commissioners are going to...
Bring the email service in-house.
Okay.
What would we be saving by doing that, Ernie?
We would be providing a professional email service to the county to emulate a workplace as most large organizations do, and as a workplace that was talked about at the LCCA summit at the college.
But I mean, would we be eliminating a middle person if we were to do it in-house? A middle firm?
I think we're getting rid of everyone doing their own thing, right? That's where the cost is, right?
Yes, there's, um, there's everyone doing their own thing, as you stated earlier, and this would be a step towards bringing that in, giving us the professional-looking presence that I think that we need.
How was that? Was that voted on? How was it voted? It doesn't say. Okay, so this is a way for us, so then in the future, when people want to spend more money on computers that tie into the email, you'll be able to say whether it's justified or not, because we will be controlling the email service in this county, correct?
Well, I think it would be justified, just in the fact that they had a PC on their desk as far as providing them with email.
No, the problem is, we don't know in any of these other departments that if they need a new computer, because it could be, the memory could be gone, who knows, outdated, but at least you'll be able to take a look, because they know it's still capable with the email system that we have in-house. I mean, that's kind of decisions you could, would be able to make, correct? Because the problem is, we don't know what's going on in each of our, all these other departments.
Right, and...
Is that where this is heading? Am I on the right track, or am I off somewhere in my field? Yeah, he won't say that either way.
Very polite, isn't he?
Well, the very leading question, so...
Am I in left field on this?
No, no, you're not.
You're directing the witness.
We will be, we will...
Sorry, Your Honor.
He can't approach the bench. We will, uh, we will be able to, we will be able to be in the driver's seat concerning this issue to answer your question in the affirmative.
For all these departments?
Yes, yes.
To the benefit of the county as a whole.
Yes, centralization in some issues is, is necessary and achieves economy of scale and keeps us narrowly focused on the goal.
Boom, done. Okay, now, let's talk about the next step.
Does this eliminate the middleman? My understanding, we're going through a middleman.
No, 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 that's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue with who's to provide our first communication or Erie Shores. If we bring the email in-house, the mail will actually be parked on our controlled server, uh, servers.
So now we'll control email.
Right. Now, the middleman issue, as Ms. Basie's referring to, has to do with who is our provider of the service that brings that email.
If it's Sprint or AT&amp;T or...
Okay, so let's talk about that right now.
So can we resolve this issue and then move on to that, or does, or do you want this to be part of the whole discussion?
I think it's part of it, because I thought, I thought we're talking about email.
Well, I think we're done with this, we can just go on to this now. Let's go on to this now.
Well, this is it, isn't it?
Yeah, we're, no, I don't, I think we're already done with talking about the cost.
Well, what I thought was maybe we could have a motion to approve these requisitions, and that's where I was going.
Let me, let me try this.
No?
Commissioner Basie, the matter of who, whether it's Erie Shores or First Communications, these licenses and this, this stuff is needed to do this in-house centralized, so that's why they're two separate issues. If we go, if, if the ultimate decision is to, we remain with the previous decision on First Communication, we still need the licenses and we still need the equipment, is that correct?
Yes, we still need the licenses and we'll need the equipment to bring the service in-house.
Okay, so, so that will not influence the Erie Shores First Communication decision.
Okay, so let's get the resolutions off the back, so...
I'll move for approval of the requisitions, which is item number six on our agenda.
Is it requisitions?
It's all the requisitions.
Okay. Second.
Well, what about these training monitors? I'd like to know what those are, too, that's another 5,200.
Yeah, Ernie can address that. CPUs from the training slash monitors for MicroAdvantage, Theresa, want to dig that up? Two four four seven, thank you. Good girl, she's on the block.
I, I have discussed this issue at considerable lengths. I, I need to point out before Ernie's talks that I did, he did want additional ones, and I did chop this down, so with that, I will let him explain what, why he needs this material.
That's for the six computers?
I believe so.
It's the four. It says four CPUs for spares and training, it lists...
Yes, yeah, six and then four.
Yeah. Quantity of six, and then a quantity of four here.
We're going, what are we getting for that?
Is that what we resolved on during our negotiations?
Those, yes, those computers will be used, we will have a spare, we'll be able to set up a small training environment, we'll be able to simulate things before we let the software go live, testing, eventually working towards a standardized desktop, which would be a standard computer configuration for users, and be a part of an ongoing project.
Is that going to be, in other words, that's for six computers?
Well, two of those computers are for county employees, four of them are for training and spares.
We don't have any old ones we can use for training?
My understanding, they all went to auction just before I came to work here, and there's no spares around at the moment.
They were gutted first.
That's a good way of putting it. I happened to purchase a few of them at auctions, there wasn't much left on the inside of...
They said they pulled everything out that was usable, and we didn't know at the time we auctioned them out, until people started calling us and telling them there was no memory in there.
We auctioned about, about 200 computer shells that looked like complete computers until you tried to plug them in when you got home, and there was no memory, no hard drives, no processes, uh, nothing.
We talked about that years ago, about setting up like a warehouse and gutting these old computers, or using pieces and parts from one to repair others, and having like a little area for work, a work area, and they tried to get that into the data room down in the lower level, apparently there, there wasn't enough room?
No, what happened was that we did start doing that, I think it was about four or five years ago.
And this was when Gene Hartman was here?
Yeah, we started doing it, and what people were doing was, because it was open to the county as a whole, they would bring their, their broken PCs down, pick up a good one, and no one kept track of it, so they were keeping all the good stuff and bringing us the bad stuff, and they would never get it fixed. So that didn't work out, as much as we tried to keep inventory track of that, and people would just bring stuff in, drop it off, and never come to pick up their broken stuff, and then they would keep the good stuff.
Yeah, I remember that, you're right.
That's not going on now, right?
We don't have the...
We don't have anything going on right now.
We don't have workshop.
We don't have.
Okay.
Does that address your question then?
Is that what you're trying to do, Ernie? Start, get a little workshop where you guys can repair some of these?
So we can test things and simulate things without using actual PCs that are on the network live, we can set up mini networks and test things and also provide training with, you know, in-house.
And I think this is something the Commissioner Basie's talked to a couple of times throughout the year, having some place for people to learn on the computers, so this would be the start in that direction, Commissioner. One of these is also for Karen to, to use for work, isn't it?
There would be, there'd be three or four PCs for Karen and I to simulate things and get ready for, you know, test projects before we put them live on the network. That also falls back to the reference materials included in the thirty-eight thousand dollars from ASAP software.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Basie?
Yeah, I'm still worried about what comes up in the future. I think it's always great to be concerned, because it's not, it's never a project.
It's never an end, it's always the beginning.
With, unless, unless we go beyond the 520 users, that is it for the email project.
So John can bank on this over two years, that we're gonna be paying this every...
The price of renewing the license, I'm not sure of. Uh, Microsoft just changed the way they do business with their licensing the first of October. Everyone, including myself, is still trying to get familiar with those details, but I've worked closely with that vendor. That is a state vendor. There's two vendors in the country that were given this pricing, and we were lucky to find them, and the other quotes will show that.
I certainly do substantiate that.
Uh, before you vote on this, I have a problem with this requisition.
Perhaps you might wanna address that.
Yes, that's where I'm going right now.
Um, there's quotes down there.
Would you approach the bench?
She can't get through.
She can't raise that bar there.
The first pencil then appears to be lower than the, um, Smart Solutions appears to be lower, but Jim thought that it didn't include the second item.
The second item? I'm not sure what, what do you see?
The quotes that are there. It appears that Smart Solutions is a little bit less than the one that we're awarding the bid to, and Jim has indicated that he's...
MicroAdvantage is our local vendor?
Is that the 3% preference that's included?
3%.
I thought so, but I, I would just wanted to verify that.
Okay, yeah, that's why we went with MicroAdvantage, it's our local vendor, so it falls in between that 3% that we gave our local vendors' preference.
Okay, okay, great, good job.
No problem.
Thank you, Yvonne. All right, is there any further discussion on the motion? Ma'am, clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Basie?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, are there other issues we wish to discuss with respect to...
Yes, I, I would like the board to take the issue of our internet provider. Uh, we started talking about it last week. Uh, Commissioner Basie had asked for some information, we brought some. We weren't unable to conclude our discussions and get a decision last week, and we subsequently wanted some additional information, which some of it's been provided, or all of it's been provided, and I think we should take that under discussion and, and try to make a decision on that.
Is there any other issues, other than the one, two, three, four, five, six that I'm looking at for First Communications and Erie Shores? Is there anything else I'd, I'm a realm of knowledge on this?
I thought those were the most relevant to the decision.
Well, well, let's look at the, this is not always the first consideration, but let's talk about the amount of money. The present provider apparently is agreeing to provide this service for $999 a month, and you have provided a comparable that First Communications would be charging $1,055.43 per month. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Uh, contingent on signing the new agreement, which is not binding with Erie Shores, other than pay for the service as long as we use it.
Okay, what do you mean it's not binding? You mean they can change the price, or we're in it till we get out?
No, the, uh, First Communications required a two-year contract to get that price.
Okay.
Erie Shores is offering an ongoing service at a reduced rate, uh, just signing the new agri- the new agreement, which is not, um...
Is it month-to-month?
There's not a term on it.
Is it a month-to-month contract? Oh.
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Erie Shores is a month-to-month?
Yes.
That's what we wanted.
Okay.
So we're looking at a $56 difference. Erie Shores knew we were gonna leave, so they reduced their price, so... We got $2,300 for a new router. That's, is that called, is that installation two, or... No, or would you guys be doing that yourselves in-house?
The installation, again, we would probably have to, depending where we bought it, whether we needed additional service, uh, I believe we could buy it without...
Without?
Uh, being concerned about a professional installation.
So where do we go on this one?
Now, what are we, just what are we getting here? Like the AT&amp;T or Sprint type of thing, is that what this is?
Yes, it's the service that we're using right now, it would just stay where we are.
I know, but what happens if we go to AT&amp;T or Sprint? I mean, aren't these people just a, a middleman for them, Lauren? I mean, they're not the ones providing the service.
They are a reseller of a service, the same way that First Communications is, and they're a local vendor. We are getting T1 access speed, and that's the real issue.
Are we gonna need a bigger T-line, or whatever they're called, are we gonna have to go to a T3 or something else here?
I would like to think so, but I don't believe so, Commissioner.
How come we can't go through Sprint, or, or AT&amp;T, or somebody? Why do we have to use these people that are not the...
We could, and that was a, uh, a quote that I did get going directly through Sprint. I did also have that quote along with several other vendors.
What was that?
Oh, why don't we do this? If you wanna, if you wanna go direct and get a right, rather middleman, the best thing to do is to stick with Erie Shores, 'cause we can go month-to-month, and in the meantime, give them time to see if we can go direct, and we're not locked into a two-year contract. I mean, if we go like this, it's the same price, it's a little cheaper, but bottom line here is, we could cancel this in 30 days. But this one here, we're locked in for two years, so in the meantime, we can have, already researched some more, but the fact is, we're starting January 1st, we're gonna be still paying another $260, $76 more. So if we, if we change it, basically, there's a resolution that says First Communications. So if we, if we cancel that and stick with Erie Shores, and then you can figure out whether or not we should go with direct with AT&amp;T, Sprint, or Altel, I think, um, I don't know, I mean, why don't we do that? Why don't we just, why don't we stick with Erie Shore, but right now, we're paying 300 bucks more right now, so all we need to do is pass a resolution for this, we can cancel whenever we want, you can go dig in some more to see if we can get even cheaper than that.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Oh, we didn't prep, you make this up, we planned that.
Is that in the form of the motion?
No, I just, no, I'm just saying, I'm just speaking out loud, I just didn't know, if we're gonna go with a different provider, get rid of the middleman, let's just at least save a couple hundred dollars and just stick with these guys until, and I'm sure they're gonna find out about this, and maybe they'll lock it down even more.
So why won't you make that in the form of the motion?
Yeah, I don't know what, I mean, we already got a motion for First Communication.
We have to rescind that.
First, first we have to deal with the First Communication issue, then we can deal with a further motion to go into a different direction.
Oh, Jerry's gone, but I think you could handle it all in one motion.
Yes, you could handle it in one motion, but you have to...
You have to have the dates and the...
You wanna have the issues all clearly defined.
I don't know, like, I mean, that was in the last board.
If it's agreeable to the board, uh, I think you should pass a resolution rescinding the first commu- the authorization to move forward with First Communication.
No, the authorization not to move forward with First Communication.
No, we had authorization to move forward with it.
Right, now we want to rescind that.
Right, you're rescinding the authorization to move forward.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and we were passing a new resolution, then we would...
I'm still mad.
Okay, I understand.
No, you're not, neither one of you are.
Jimmy, I'm mad at you.
Neither one of you is angry at the other, it's not so.
All right.
You want to make a motion, then, to rescind the award to First Communications that occurred previously?
Yes, and...
Well, I wanted to make it all in one, you're suggesting we do it, too.
I, I suggest that we fraction them for clarity. Then that's the motion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Now, Derek, are you comfortable with the motion?
We're looking at her.
Commissioner Basie, you know what we're talking about?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, excuse me, I did, that's insulting, I didn't mean that, you know where we're going with this?
Yes, I understand.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am clerk.
Thank you. Hi.
Mrs. Blair?
Hi.
Mrs. Basie?
Hi.
Okay, that's great. Now, what's item number two, Mr. Cordes?
I'm not sure you...
Well, I don't think we have to make a motion, so therefore, do we, ask Yvonne, do we need a motion?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Ernie.
Well, that's not allowed.
Ma'am, we're very smart for one second. I don't think you need a motion to do anything, just, all you wanna do is tell us that you want to have some other options brought back to you in January. You don't need a resolution to do it.
We don't need it to be January, either, because he might not get it done in January.
All I'm saying is, what about the new contrac- do we have a new contract that we have to sign?
Yeah, we do need to do something with that contract, uh, from Erie Shores, that they just gave us the, the lock-in to that hun- that 99, that $999.
Do we have to vote on that?
Wait a minute.
Why? Because that's the only way they're gonna give it to us, if we sign the contract. It's still a month-to-month contract, but...
Okay, well, send it through, send it through the regular channel, get it signed.
Okay, okay.
All right, I thought it was $276 a month, where'd I hear this 900?
No, it's a savings, right now, we're paying $1,275, and they went down to $999 a month.
Well, so we don't have to vote on this?
Well, I think we do, if it's a new contract...
Do you have the contract here?
Yeah, it's downstairs, I don't have it on me.
I don't have to vote on a contract, if the, if Ennis hasn't reviewed it yet.
We all approve it, subject to his review.
How much is it a month, Yvonne?
$999.
Okay, makes sense. Subject to...
Subject to review by the prosecutor.
Okay, as long as, as long as what says on here, we're...
Month-to-month, and we can cancel...
Whenever we want.
30-day notice.
Okay, that's fine.
Somebody making a motion?
I'm, I'm waiting till we're all getting comfortable with this.
Sorry.
Are you, are you making this motion, that we, this contract, subject to review by the county prosecutor?
So moved.
That's great, David.
And subject to, I'd like to see it's subject to, um, Ernie checking on the Sprint or...
Well, I think he's gonna do that.
Whatever they call that. Anyway, that'd be like a step three.
But I want it included, I wanted to include it in here, that I know that Ernie is going to be doing this, and it's gonna be in the short future.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to accept Erie Shores' contract, subject to Jerry Ennis's approval, and that hopefully, uh, within the next 90 days, that we could have quotes from other vendors, so that we don't have to use a middleman. How's that?
Second that. Further discussion?
Took me a while to get there, but I got there.
Okay, ma'am clerk? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Hi.
Mrs. Basie?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
I wonder if there anyway wants public discussion, what do you think?
Well, I see one public person here. Um, Mr. Kish.
Well, why are we talking computers?
No, no, come on up to the microphone.
Is this my official three minutes or not?
Yep.
As soon as you get up out of your seat.
It's Christmas time, we'll give you a minute.
Well, I was glad to have Robert Kish, Alaria, Ohio, the only member of the CCC, and the only citizen present.
No, 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 that's wrong, you are not the only citizen present. We all are citizens.
She's here, she, is she here as a witness, or...
She's on her lunch hour, but we are all citizens.
Okay, I'm a taxpayer, too.
So are we.
What I was, what I heard on the radio, true or false, I don't know, but there's a fellow by the name of Bill Gates, and he offered, started out with 60 million, I guess he wound up to a billion dollars' worth of computer to schools.
Mm-hmm.
Man, and they turned him down. We got some computers maybe coming, maybe we should apply for them, I don't know. But I do use one of Gates' computers at the library that he donated, he donated nine, so...
I've been there, I've visited them, aren't they nice?
Okay. Uh, I was glad to find out something today that I hadn't realized. First speaker, of course, brought it to my attention, that now I know where my anxiety, anxiety comes from.
(laughing).
The lady in red.
Oh, Santa wears red, too.
Do you know where that came from originally? I've been racking my brain, and I'm old enough, I think, to remember where the original lady in red came from.
Oh, I know all about her.
Dillinger's...
Oh, wait, that, Santa wears red, too.
Dillinger's girlfriend.
So does Yvonne.
Identified him coming out of a movie, and that was before the FBI, they were called G-Man, and that was the end of Dillinger.
I think I heard that story, too.
Okay. Anyhow, I came here as a public servant to point out that the fourth floor, if there's, there still are some copies, that if you believe as I do, and the gentleman was here two meetings ago, and I wasn't here, uh, set about getting a form where you can take your, uh, house and the pictures of it, and your videos off of the website. I was talking with the cameraman, and I remember a time when if you were to use something and publish it, you had to get an actual fee. Here we go, we're talking about legality somewhat, you had to get a release, you had to get a release at one time, even if it was only a dollar, and sign a release to have your, whatever it was, to give them permission to use the photo that they used. I didn't get my dollar yet.
Oh, you mean a release for...
Yes. I don't know if that's true or false.
I think you have to do that.
ACLU's not here, so I don't know if that's still in effect or not, but that was in effect back in the 50s when I took a photography class.
We, when we did television advertisement, if there was anybody on that we used, or that was in, in an area that we were shooting, we had to give them the dollar and get the release, or just get a release, but I don't know if your house is gonna give them a release or...
I don't know. I think ACLU could help me, but they're not here.
(laughing).
Here's something that I thought was interesting, I saw this sign.
Well, show us, Bob.
I'm gonna give you one, I was just gonna read it.
(laughing).
Insanity is doing the same thing, expecting different results. Uh, anyhow, that led me into this part, 911 calls seem simple, they worry about who's gonna respond. 911, you dial 911, and whoever answers the phone's supposed to know where it comes from, because they've got locators, so...
Mm-hmm.
So that's simple thing. Anyhow, uh, at last I found, okay, the full red, someone, okay, someone once said, if you enjoy eating sausages, never visit the plant where it's made.
I heard that before, too.
Okay. Having been unable to visit the plant, where the J.C. Penney building was purchased, and other Columbia Ga- and the other Columbia Gas building, objective session, I guess I was lucky to find...
I know.
I guess I was lucky to find this sign, although this isn't a true...
What does this say?
This is not a true duplication, because here, we actually are going to put Mr. Twining in the building. We're actually gonna use it for a purpose that I approve of.
You approve of that?
Yeah. The main reason being that if you go ahead and you divide, uh, approximate cost of approximately $200,000 by approximately 10 employees, the easy math is, that's $20,000 per employee.
Until you get to the renovations.
Uh, renovations are supposed to be there, 160 for the building, 40 for the renovations.
Okay.
Bye, Mormon, it's your buying us all lunch, Bob.
Oh, well, I don't know, I just, I lumped it together to be...
And we are getting hungry.
We are, well, yeah. And the big, big advantage of this building is, it's got two floors, 10 employees, that's eight corners, only two people will not have corner offices. Anyhow, looking at it that, that way, I, I went on further to apply this, the bad news. The bad news is the Justice Center is gonna cost approximately $46 million, divided by approximately, here again, 400 employees. So, man, are we getting a bargain with the Columbia Gas building.
You're in favor of it, then?
Oh, absolutely, that's only 20,000 per employee. This Justice Center, if I, my math or my wristwatch is correct, is $115,000 per employee.
Well, divided by 100 years.
Divided by 100 years, plus maintenance, and heating, and upkeep.
Also divided by how many people are gonna flow through that building in a given year, Bob.
I know, we're gonna, I, I understand this, it's called armatrage. I tried that on the, on the one-armed bandits out in Vegas, my arm got weaker rather than stronger.
You sure it was just your arm?
No, it was me. All right, Mr. Kirk, Mr. Kish, do you have more comments to make?
Nah, that's a, well, the bad news has had to do with...
Your three minutes is almost up, even if we use two of them.
Well, somebody once said, if you build a barn, you will fill it. Well, I built the barn, yes, it's full. On the way here, a radio announcer was pronouncing that they had a study on soccer, and they say it's a surfer, it's a safer sport...
Than what?
With smaller balls.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Kish, I move, we adjourn.
Hi, Bill. This is Blair.
Hi.
Mr. Moore. Oh, this is Basie.
Hi.
Hurry up, turn that off.
Had you turned it off?